So we're going to go ahead and move on to our 9:06 a.m. item, consideration of update on COVID-19. And today with us, we have Angela Cuellar Marroquin and also Ernesto Padilla, who are our guests to speak on this item. And Ms. Hutchinson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm really pleased to be able to introduce these two speakers today. As you know, we're trying to vary the COVID-19 update to your board so that we can make sure all perspectives are considered. And so in anticipation that today the report would really focus on the Latino and tribal communities, you know, to really speak to the ways that they have been impacted and how they're faring, we had Dr. Gary Pace record a video in advance that gives the more technical update as to where we're at with COVID-19. And Matthew Rothstein will take just a moment to tell people where they can find that.
Yes, that video is available now on the County of Lake Facebook page, as well as on the County of Lake YouTube channel. So if you go to youtube.com and search County of Lake, CA, then you'll find it pretty readily. And also, if you go to the County of Lake Facebook page, which is facebook.com/laccountycagov, it's also right there and available for you. So we hope that anyone interested will go to one of those locations and watch at their standard I'd be briefing with Dr. Pace.
Thank you, Matthew. And so with that said, I'd like to turn it over to Angela and Ernesto. We can start with you, Ernesto, if you'd like.
Okay, thank you very much, Carol, and good morning, Board. You know, I want to take this opportunity to thank Lake County Public Health for the partnership that they've had with Lake County Tribal Health. And I'll go through some of the initiatives and outreach efforts that we've gone through and participated and partnered with in the county. As I go through this, a brief summary of kind of our activity here at Tribal Health regarding the tribal community. We started vaccinating January 4th, 2021, when we received our first shipment of vaccines from the Indian Health Service. We got them a little bit earlier since we went directly and didn't go through the state. To date, we have administered four about, and all these numbers are approximate, I'm rounding up, or to the closest thousand. 4,000 total vaccines. Out of those 4,000, 1,000 have been administered to native patients. Within those thousands, within those 1,000 native patients, there's about 650 individual patients. Total individual patients of Lake County Tribal Health, including natives, have been 2,900. So if we look at that compared to the native population in Lake County, which is about 3,000, and we figure that about 2/3 of those are at vaccination age, and we take the 656 we administered here, that's about 33% of the population that has received a vaccine from us here. From the start, we started having what we called the stand downs on the weekends. We started, we had them in February of '21, March and April, took a break in May, and then started again in June. And on those, we would have them over the weekend to allow people to come in. It was a drive-through. We had a staff here on site. In January, we did Moderna. February, we did Moderna. March, we did the Johnson. And then in June, we administered Pfizer to pediatric patients. You know, the demand started strong. You know, on the first stand downs we had here on our parking lots on the weekends, in February, we had about averaging about 300 patients that would come through per weekend. And we had the respective booster shots scheduled, you know, 28 or 30 days after in the same month. But the demand started dropping, you know, especially when we brought in the Pfizer for youth and did the pediatric stand down, we only saw 42 patients there. Now, we've worked together on outreach efforts with the public health. We can only vaccinate our own patients, and we carry the Moderna and the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine. And public health has joined us, and they've administered the Pfizer due to the cold, build the cold storage requirements. So we actually went and went around the lake and visited all the tribal rancherias administering vaccines to residents and tribal staff. So they were both native and non-native. This happened in June and July. And we saw that the demand was a little low, you know, vaccinating anywhere between 5 and 10 patients per rancheria. We've had other stand downs as well. We also have Vaccination Monday through Friday here onsite walk-in, and we're not seeing a lot of demand for those at this point. We saw a little bit increase due to the Delta variant. We had a little increase in demand there. And then again, after the state and federal mandates for employment. But now we're back to the regular numbers where it's very, very limited, very one to a day. At this point, I think everyone who's wanted a vaccine has gotten it. We continue to have education efforts. The California Rural Indian Health Board has put out a series of flyers and videos. They're culturally sensitive. And I know Kyle Bill and Rose do have also worked in putting some of those documents and flyers together for the native community in efforts to increase the education and increase vaccination. Other than that, we just continue to offer it here. On Monday through Thursday, we vaccinate the Moderna, and on Fridays, we do the Johnson &amp; Johnson, just to keep the dates clear and the vaccines separate. For example, this Friday, we are closed in observance of California Indian Day. However, we will be open just to do a stand down for influenza vaccine and COVID vaccines for our Native Americans here. So we continue to have these efforts. And again, I just want to thank the partnership that we've had with Public Health in going out with us and being able to vaccinate those community members that want our patients or didn't want the Moderna or Johnson &amp; Johnson, prefer the Pfizer. So I want to thank that team out there. You know, everyone's understaffed right now, including us. Our regular diabetes didn't take a break for COVID. We're still seeing all those patients. And at any given day, we're 15 to 20 employees down. But you know, the people here, our staff and the staff there at Public Health have kept working towards the same goal. And you know, it's been 18 months that we've been on the front line. So I just want to acknowledge them and thank them for their partnership. And my team, too, so on all these efforts that we've been doing. And of course, some of the chairmen, even somewhere on the board, they've worked with us as well as facilitating these onsite stand downs at each of the rancherias. That's pretty much a brief summary of what the activity we've had at Tribal Health.
Thank you very much for your presentation and definitely for your efforts on the front line. Let's go ahead and move on to Angela Cuellar Marroquin.
Good morning. Thank you for having me. Thank you, Board members, for allowing us to go ahead and share all the work that we've been doing. Ana Santana couldn't join us today, but on behalf of both of us, we thank you for trusting us to collaborate with Public Health in order to try to reach our Latino community as much as we possibly can. So we started off in, you know, January with our efforts. And we started seeing, you know, the hesitancy. That was the biggest thing. And so we decided that obviously a language barrier was there. So we took it upon ourselves to open up a specific, you know, time. We started off with just, you know, on Fridays from 9 to 5, if you wanted to make an appointment and you were Spanish speaking and you needed support with making an appointment, we opened up five different phone numbers in our Office of Ed of our five employees that are working on this grant. And the first day, I think we made roughly about over 300 appointments. So we managed to get most of our farm workers in and quick. And it was just an amazing thing to watch at the actual location because we did go and help with translation as well at the actual event of the vaccines at the drive-through. So it was, it was really good to see that we had quite a low number, and then it jumped within a month to 19%. So it was about 6% of vaccinated Latino community members. And then it jumped to 19% after just one month. So just seeing that, we kind of figured this is what we need to continue to do. So we keep continuing to share on our Facebook Latinos United page, information where you can call us, how you can call us, if you need anything, not just regards to COVID-19, but resources for food, any other rental assistance programs. We support that as well. As people did become positive, they were comfortable with calling us. Ana, being the Healthy Start Director, could direct staff to, you know, get those resources of food to peoples because they couldn't leave their homes. So we were really excited to see that, you know, they built, we've built that trust with everybody. So seeing, you know, at first, and just like Ernesto said, it's kind of died down, you know, each month. And I went on and looked, and each month, it's grown about, you know, 3% to 5%. But those first couple of months were really crucial. And the more people hear that they're getting vaccinated, they tell their friends, their friends get it, and their family members. And so we just continue to push that and share the messaging that we're given from Public Health. Things we find, we try to get local people, that people know, to try to share their stories or why they got vaccinated, which is one of our, one of the biggest things we did just recently on September 12th in Kelseyville. Again, Tribal Health, great partner, because they sponsored the event. And they thought of that as well as vaccinating there. And I, and I'm sure, Ernesto, I think I heard it was 23 people got vaccinated that day. And that's 23 more people we didn't have. So our idea at our booth that we did that day was, we wanted people to come and share, you know, why did they get vaccinated? And if they're not vaccinated, what was the hesitancy? But I think the majority, I think we had maybe between 4 and 10 people, if that, that were not vaccinated that came to our booth. And, you know, misinformation, of course, is the number one thing that people are resistant, is, you know, getting the chip. Or people are dying with the vaccine. And there's all these things that are pushing those, you know, resistencies in our community. But everyone else kept coming, and they're like, no, I'm vaccinated. I'm vaccinated. So what we did is, we said, okay, well, tell us why you got vaccinated. And they were honest and true to why they got vaccinated. It wasn't, you know, just a generic, it was, I don't want to die. And I want to see my family. I want my grandchildren to experience having me in their life. You know, there were lots of different things. So what we did is, we asked permission, we took their pictures with their hashtag of their whys, and compiled a video. It's on our Facebook page. I figured it was a good time to post it after we did the leaders video to show people that everyone else is doing it, too. We're asking you as leaders, we're asking you as your neighbors, we're asking you as your family, as your friends. So that messaging has been pretty good. It's a little slow, you know, we only have about 400 and something followers, but it's still getting out there. And as people share, and I push my family to share, and it's starting to spread the word that, you know, more and more of our community has been vaccinated. And I think also those numbers are showing. At the very beginning of this pandemic, the Latino Hispanic community was the highest rate of COVID-19 active cases. And we were dying. And now we are 21% of the cases. We are not the leading group. So it means we're getting vaccinated. And we are at 57% fully vaccinated. And with the one vaccine numbers, we're only about 37% short of our Latino community being vaccinated. So I think they've built that trust. They trust us, they trust their community, they trust their friends, their neighbors, their families. The most recent efforts we're doing now is we're going out to them. So we did another vaccination event on August 26. And that was at the Kelseyville Family Apartments. And they vaccinated 38, 39 people. They did the second dose already, and I think only four people didn't show up for their second dose. So out of all those, that was another, you know, almost 40 people that were not vaccinated before. But we went to them. We went to where they lived. We had a health fair to give information of why it was important. You know, we gave away lots of things to the children that were coming up to our booth. And it was just a really feel-good event that you said, okay, you know, we tested and we gave vaccine, and people trusted to come to them. And the hours that we did that was after work. So between 3:00 and 7:00 p.m. So it, you know, as much as we can, we've got to meet people where they're at. We're hoping to do another event in Clear Lake. We're trying to see if Mendham Mill, or if we can't get Mendham Mill in Clear Lake, we're going to do the park again, hopefully, again, to try to reach that community that's just right there on Highway 53 in the mobile home parks, where there's a lot of our community still not informed and are not vaccinated. And then another one will be in the Kelseyville, the other Kelseyville Apartments, and then hopefully in Lakeport at the Willow Point. So we're coming out to them. We are giving information where they can get the mobile unit and where they can get shots. But when you really take that time to show that you want to show up for our people, they tend to even believe it more. So I think that that's, even if it's another person or two, it's still more. So we just are trying to just get out there. And we've been working with Ezekiel from, he's from Sonoma County, and he's been doing some efforts in Sonoma County. So we've kind of teamed up with him and more Latino community members and leaders. And that's how we're promoting it. We do, we have Lisa announcing things on her radio show. So we're just, you know, tracking along and just sharing, sharing on Facebook. Facebook is a huge portion of what we're doing. But we're also now, you know, going out and doing in-person events and getting people to really realize that it's that extra layer of protection. It's not going to be 100%, but it's an extra layer of protection. And even if you got it, it's protecting you just a little bit more even. So we've lost a few community members that were very known in the community. So a lot of people have really seen that it can happen to any of us. So we're just trying to continue that and move forward with those messages. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for your presentation. I definitely want to say thanks to the contracts that we had with LCOE to reach out to our Latino community, and also the contract we had with Conocatay to reach out to the native community. And I know that Tribal Health has been at the forefront since the beginning, even reaching out further than the populations that they are caring for. And I really appreciate that as well. Let's go ahead and bring it to the board for any questions or comments.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, I didn't look down at the pen. I saw your eyes. Supervisor Pieska.
Ernesto and Angela, I want to thank you so much. You've been making your presence known in Kelseyville. And I've watched how the trust is being built, and it really, really matters. And reaching out to the community and going where they are and meeting where they are and having those conversations, it really matters. And we're making, you know, we're in the army crawl of this part of the vaccination campaign. And every single one of these matters. And I want to thank you for being at the Kelseyville Apartments, for the event on August 26, and for the Dia de la Independencia event. It matters, and I appreciate everything that you're doing. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you. Supervisor Crandall?
Yes. I just got a message from Chairman Cromwell and the Administrator from Robinson-Esterstoffer that their Robinson tribe is 40% vaccinated, and they share, or they host a vaccination site at the casino on Fridays from 8:00 to 5:00 p.m. And Esther had stated that 112 Moderna, 25 Pfizer, and 24, I don't know what KK means, but whatever that one, or Johnson &amp; Johnson, I think that was the mistext. So yeah, they're providing, I think, an incentive. I know for Upper Lake, one thing I do know about the Upper Lake is that they've lost at least three to four people recently, like, I want to say, like, within the last two months, to COVID-19. Weren't vaccinated, from what I understand. So it's real, it's a real thing. And I appreciate Ernesto and the Tribal Health Organization, because a lot of folks will go there in times notice if something's happening, and they'll facilitate for them to make sure that they get a vaccination or a test or something of that nature. And they usually do that for the community as well. So just, you know, and I appreciate also Angela's report as well, you know. So yeah, just wanted to give that.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Simon?
Yeah, I just want to thank both organizations. Obviously, Lake County Tribal Health being a lot closer to the Middletown Rancheria. You know, obviously, I know that you've come down and done the onsite clinics. And one other thing I just want to say, Ernesto, you touched on it early, that Tribal Health, you know, went with a direct contract and was able to get those vaccines a little bit quicker. And I really appreciate that, the focus that was put on our tribal elders, because, you know, they're the most important assets we have, our children and our elders. So, you know, I really, I really appreciate that. I appreciate the hard work that's been done all throughout. I appreciate the opportunities when you did come and report on the numbers that were happening at the facility. And, you know, both with all of our brown communities, our Latino community, and everything here in Lake County, I appreciate the hard work that's been done. There's still a lot more to do. There's still vaccine hesitancy across each tribal nation I know here and throughout the county with all of our constituents. So we'll continue messaging where people can get educated and make their own decision, make that very clear. It is their own decision, but it is available. So I want to thank both you. And I also want to thank our Public Health Department, because each and every one in the health industry at this point has just been working so hard. And, you know, you see it every day of just the stress and everything that they're under right now. It seems like, you know, a never-ending process. But I just want to thank you and everybody in the health industry at this point for all the hard work, because it does get tiresome, it does get overwhelming and overburdening, because it's just constantly here. We're constantly losing people closer and closer to us, where people are getting sick, even younger and younger. So I just wanted to thank you very much. So appreciate everything, and we'll keep working and collaborating together.
Thank you for the comments. I want to thank you both as well. You took part in a video that we put out last week. I think that's the kind of messaging as well that goes out to the community, where there's so many people involved, that it can hit every sector of our community, because we all live within a little niche of the community. And if we can reach out to individual pockets, we can make an impact and get their attention and listen to the people that they look up to. You're all mentors, you're all leaders. And I think that that messaging is very positive and very impactful. Ernesto?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I just wanted to mention one point that I forgot to report on. I think, to my knowledge, five out of the six consortium tribes in Lake County are individually on their own, through their tribal organization, are offering financial incentives ranging from $500 to $1,000 for their membership to get vaccinated. And we saw a big increase in demand when those were rolled out. So I know that the tribes are doing their part as well in increasing these vaccination efforts. Just wanted to mention that.
Thank you very much. Definitely takes a little bit of everything. Any further comments before we open it up for the public? And before I open it up for the public, some people are having a little bit of fun with their names. It would be really nice if we can all act like adults in the room, and if you can maybe write your name, so it's easier to call on you. I will not call on you if your name is meant to be a joke or you're trying to be funny. You can speak, but I will not call your name. So we will just work with Matthew to make that work for us, because I definitely don't want to, you have a First Amendment right to speak, but at the same time, it would be nice if we could all be respectful in the room. Let's start with phone 4627. And again, please give us your full name, and you have three minutes.
Yeah, good morning. This is Tom Slate. Again, I will start out by saying, not all of us agree to call in on our, you know, have a similar line of thinking, but, you know, I speak for myself, so don't confuse me with anybody else, please. I just had two things very quickly about, very briefly about that's key, is the PCR test apparently is not a test, and comes up with false positives that lead to lockdowns that are not needed. But that's a little background. But the thing that I want to speak about COVID is, when this first started, I was 76 years old, and I was concerned. I wasn't frightened, but I was concerned naturally. But what was so obvious to me is, instead of being, doing the responsible thing, governments and particularly media urging everyone to stay calm, it was just the opposite, like, just wild fear-mongering, you know, that term, we're all going to die. And that was so, has been so obvious to me all along. And to me, that is the elephant in the room. We see these billionaires are getting more and more. It seems to me to be a huge power grab, people being, I sense the pace, the art test is, as, I'm sure somebody will disagree probably, but is not a test. There's so much that's come out about that. And so, unneeded lockdowns. But what I'm getting at, more than anything, is the, just the fear-mongering. To me, that is so obvious. We don't need to be afraid of terrorists anymore, because we have, we can be controlled with this new fear. So I hope people will consider that. To me, that is as much the elephant in the room as urging people, you know, whipping up fear instead of being calm and rational. So that's what I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Any further public comments? I see no further hands up. Julia Bono?
Hello, can the board hear me?
Yes, we can. If we can mute phone 46, thank you. And then Julia Bono, please, we can hear you. Now you just muted yourself. If we can unmute?
How's that?
We can hear you.
Okay, thank you. All right. Today, I wanted to highlight the legal ramifications of the board and its advisors actively promoting, administering, incentivizing, mandating, and are psychologically pushing vaccines on the population of Lake County. The latest example of this is a promotional video that does not represent in any way a balanced view of any of the risks known to be associated with vaccination. In a letter to President Joe Biden, 24 of the nation's attorneys generals said last week that they would seek legal action if the White House's proposal to require vaccines for 100 million Americans is carried out. The prosecutors chastised the president for his proposed federal vaccine requirement measure affecting employees of larger private sector employers, healthcare workers, and federal contractors. The vaccine requirement is being enacted in an underhanded manner through a rule from the Occupational Safety and Health Administration, rather than through the established legislative process. In their letter, the prosecutors stated, "Your plan is disastrous and counterproductive. And if your administration does not alter its course, the undersigned state attorneys general will seek every available legal option to hold you accountable and uphold the rule of law." I wanted to echo the sentiment of those prosecutors to the Lake County Board of Supervisors and its medical establishment mouthpieces with a serious warning. If you do not stop promoting potentially disastrous vaccine mandates and vaccines that have known harmful side effects, as demonstrated by the huge number of adverse incident and death reports made to the CDC VAERS database, then your concerned constituents and any other harm parties will have no option but to hold you all legally and financially accountable, and to take all legal measures to stop you from continuing to do this. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Any further comments before we bring it back to the board? And seeing none, let's go ahead and close public comment in the Zoom room and open it up in the board chambers. Please go ahead and come to the microphone. Give us your name, and you have three minutes.
John Moss. I remember as a child, learning the scientific method, which is getting all the facts and then coming to a conclusion. I want to commend you for listening to the people speak, all the people. And I want to tell you that getting all the facts is very important. Are you getting all the facts? It seems to me you're getting the side of the CDC and the World Health Organization without taking seriously all the facts. And so what the citizens do is get their facts, and they're called conspiracists. And they're looked down for having supported the people with the conspiracy theory. I want to remind you that the people who were related I want to remind you that the people who were related to Martin Luther King had a trial, and the jury came back that the people that killed him were conspiracy, was a conspiracy between the FBI, CIA, local law enforcement, et cetera. And I have the book to show you that. It's by James Douglas. Now we're going to have Robert Francis Kennedy write a book about Dr. Fossey. I can't wait to read it, because doctor, I mean, the attorney, Robert Francis Kennedy, is a lawyer, and he's won many cases. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And any further comments in the Boardroom? All right, and that closes public comment, and bringing it back to the Board. Any further comments or questions before we close up this item? And again, appreciate both of your work and your efforts, and I know that it's not always easy because of the fact that this is such a divisive and controversial topic, unfortunately. I think that hopefully all of us, no matter in the Zoom room or in the Boardroom, could agree that our job is to do what's best to protect the people we serve, and we are doing the best with the information that we have at our disposal, even though that information sometimes does change based on what we learn, because this is all new as of the end of 2019 and early 2020. And so this is always going to be a fluid situation, and we just need to, again, do the best we can with what we have. But again, I appreciate your efforts, both you, yourself, your staff, and your agencies for what you're doing to help us.